It's like he doesn't have any rhyme or reason to his moves and all of a sudden you're like, "What the heck?" Next thing you know, he's got it.
Four seconds. Okay, we'll call a public hearing for a variance request in the suborder.
Uh-huh. You want me to go through the details? Boggs Soma and Gail Fensky submitted a variance to build a 10 by 18 garden shed, a pre-made garden shed, placed on their property at 113 Gage Avenue Southeast. Our ordinance currently states that nothing bigger than a 12 by 12, so they would need a variance for the additional size. We just did one for Jim sitting in the back row. Obviously, our ordinance is a little old based on the prefab garden sheds. This garden shed will go on a, just on a rock face, but he is having it, he would like to have it built the way the house looks, so it will look like an additional single garage up to the time. So they're within the setback. Then those will send out to all property owners within a 350-foot radius of the property. So at this time, if anybody in the audience would like to speak in regards to this request.
We can look at other ordinances as I assume 140 or 150 square feet.
That goes back to our original ordinance that we've been trying to look at and try to evaluate.
Are you thinking that we write more notices if it's still recording variance or would think it's still...
I believe that it's going forward, I don't know.
140 square feet inch or what?
I don't, have we even got to the, that, you know.
That we consider that a look at the variance would be 2 plus.
Is that a great kind of place now?
I mean, any pre-made shed, 12 by 12, that's almost like a rubber made shed. So that's why I'm saying like, I'm a...
That's what I mean, probably should be closer to, whether it's 300 or 400. Or what if you were to structure it?
Could it be, I believe something comes into play with 200 square feet with the building code. So that might be our criteria in regards to unifying our ordinance.
Jim here says 12 by 16, isn't it?
So why is...
You were like at 190, 190. You remember the 200 square foot?
What's this number here?
Uh, 8, 190. This is 10 by 18. But if I remember right, Randy stated something about the 200 square feet and then I would have to go to the building inspector. And that probably isn't cool.
Would that be like a prefab one or just any type of 80 over 200?
I think anything over 200. So Mr. Mayor, um, you know, if you want me to open for a while in case any comments come up? You may ask you?
He's going to help us deal with the...
No, you cannot. He'd like to buy it as a premium. We can, oh, I could win, I can...
Arcton it off?
Arcton it off. Getting searched over thousands.
Good motion. Close the cover.
I'll second that. I'll make one if you have a close cover here.
I'll second. All those affairs say aye. Aye, and all the posts same side. We'll go right into workshop.
No, Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Oh, Board of Adjustments and Appeals, okay.
So nobody, now we have to go Board of Adjustment and Appeals, public hearing. Nobody stated any objection or anything in that regard. So at this time, the planning commission has recommended to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals approval of the 10 by 18 garden shed for Boggs Soma and Gail Fensky. Board of Adjustments and Appeals, do you have any questions, concerns?
Should we invoke that?
If you're ready for approval.
I make a motion to approve.
Just a...
All those affairs say aye.
Aye.
All the posts same side. Motion here. Can I give a motion to close the Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
I'll make a motion to close the Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
I'll second that.
All those affairs say aye.
Aye.
All posts same side. Motion here. Now we'll go to workshop. Transfer request for Fund 39 to Fund 46 and Fund 42 to Fund 45.
So these are the program funds for DA. Fund 39 and 40 are from the Small Cities Development Program, which is 2015. The funds that you have with South Mercy Council Agenda are specifically local funds. They're not restricted, they don't require quota amounts. So if we move them to our housing and business home programs, we can keep that sucker going for the future. And this is one of our focuses, to get some of that restricted money, uh, those funds to get in so we can start running it all again. And those two transfers are on the council agenda tonight.
And then we have a quote received from JDR, $11,099.5 for the installed mixer on a old water tower.
If this project's going, I just need the approval because that's our reselling authority. But I also wanted to give a heads up to the council in regards to finishing all of that was one of the items that, from the brand new water tower, is to install this mixer in the old water tower. Which is only what it does, is it rotates the water so it doesn't freeze. So we did find a firm that will come out and it's within the change order price that we negotiated on, and the $17,000, so it's within that amount. And so I'm asking the council to approve that quote tonight.
How do we get a file without a mixer in that tower on these years?
Because we didn't have a second water tower.
Oh, that's just the...
There was enough movement in it, there was enough movement. It's just a precautionary measure, just so that we don't freeze up.
I see it says in the right here that they, it doesn't include a while they're in paint or did. I think that we might have to do that then.
And so we get up there, they were still in the $17,000 window that we needed to be in.
And request to consider it tested, repay the terms for Schwartz on rehab loans.
So going back to the Small Cities Development Program, there was a home rehabilitation portion of that. Tara Schwartz received one of these loans back in 2017 or 2016. She is now requesting that, she, she's pursuing a quick claim deed to add her husband as a par payment. She would like to request an alternative to full repayment at her home re-up loan, she's in 2016. Patrick can talk a little bit to your loans. Restrictions, I don't see that, I think the list has options, and everything coming in. I don't know how they want to proceed.
So Celia asked me a question I want to say. It was a bit back in April or May about transferring property. And that would involve the transfer that either to a spouse would then invalidate the agreement. Then the remaining, the remaining, the loan would have to be repaid. And the city doesn't want it back because it was actually stated on this. And we have to give it back to the state. So we wouldn't benefit from it. So that was the first question. And the second one was about these other possible modifications. Now, if we do any of these modifications, then we have to reevaluate the homeowner's income within the parameters of the original program. If we were to even choose to pick one of these changes in terms, which would then include the spouse's income, which could invalidate and then the result become the same. Which is why I talked to Celia about it. I wanted, you know, she had suggested a grant for you folks because I just, that's the, it doesn't, it results in the same result whichever way you place them, in my opinion, based on the restrictions of the funds and how we receive them. So, I mean, it's...
What authority do we have to move forward? What can we...
Well, you can look to do whatever you, whatever you want with those contracts, but there are, I tell you what the collateral consequences are. It may trigger repayment pursuant to the program that was underlying. And may require repayment whichever decision you decided to make. It would be my advice not to make, to not adopt any of the proposals. I mean, I'm not sure...
Do you want my opinion on that?
So, I, I know what your opinion probably is, but you can certainly express it. I'm not going to try to stop you, but I was gonna say...
Your interpretation of those three pages of paperwork that I got as a contract are different than what a normal person would say. I'm not transferring title. I'm not doing, I've never had to re-qualify financially for this whole thing. And it states in here that, I mean, the very first page is what they intended. You sell the house, or you die, or you did propose on any of those things. If you're not the homeowner for 10 years, you have to pay back. Some guy came to my door, asked me if I wanted to do this, I qualified. They didn't work with anybody in this whole town. And I didn't get to figure out anything, it did my appliances and some of this stuff. Anyway, regardless of all of that, when this does, it goes on then to say, you know, what the sale, if you convey the property. I'm not selling it, I'm not taking my name off it. I got married after a few years and I added my husband, so that he's protected and hasn't been...
But adding someone else to a title is an actual conveyance as legally defined. If you go to Black's, if you go to Black's Law Dictionary and look up the definition of conveyance, I'm pretty certain that...
If I keep that...
Now you're transferring the interest in that property to someone else. You're not transferring the full interest, you're probably transferring a joint tenancy. However, it's still transfer conveyance, it still qualifies under those definitions under the law. So if you want to take the risk, you have to repay that loan and transfer to your husband, that's fine.
So yeah, who determines right here, who determines that? Question right in the thing. Who determines if the loan has to be repaid back right here? Other than...
I would say that the state program, like, I would say no.
I've already called them. I talked to the person who represents Southern Minnesota home.
You guys can do whatever you want, my advice is not to do whatever question.
It says right here, excuse me, the SVP Project Approval Committee consented the repayment value, who was Petty Peace and the city manager at the time, they're both gone, now it's on them. Basic, right here, one fucking line.
You're using a reason, plus, well, please.
I didn't swear, I wasn't, I'm just sending out a very realistic... You are, you are completely out of line and if necessary, you've been taken out of here. Do you understand?
Sure.
Enhance your call, sir.
I'm not asking to have anything forgiven, keep the two-year thing on there. If I sell the house in two years, then I pay it back. I mean, is that really what the city and the civilian intended? Was that I could never get married and never add my husband? I've added tons of values to the property, we just built a garage. I don't understand why you would want to harbor that fact and not let us repay as a movie loan now that we're married, so that we can continue to improve our property. I have four kids in the school district, four grandkids, Les has got five each. I, I mean, the whole program was put into place to keep families here and enhance property. And that's what I, so I don't think I should be punished.
But not moving balance of the loan.
So the total balance of the loan was $22,502.
And that's the remaining balance?
Yes, so there's nothing, there's nothing, the way this program was set up, it was not...
So is it totally forgiven? So is no way we can call and see if the conveyance was actually with, of this manner is going to trigger that repayment?
And it said we can settle the repayment by another period of years.
And if you look into your memo I brought though, I think he's speaking about. The agreement states that if the owner sells, transfers, or otherwise conveys the estate here and after it's spread, or no longer maintains the property, the consequence will place the mortgage within a period of 10 years from the date of the loan, 7th day of November 2026. They shall repay the loan there a sum equal to the full amount of the loan as set forth above or as negotiated and approved by the SVP Project Approval Committee. So that's what they're referring to when they say Petty Peace was the representative prior as well as the city administrator, that was the project approval committee.
Say that again in your initial address.
Um, the project approval committee for this program was Petty Peace and Associates' representative and the city administrator at the time.
So the city in London doing it?
City took it over after Petty Peace, after the program was closed down. So the city is now...
How many other loans like this are there?
We now still have... We have 14 more left.
Another one.
We've already, three have already been repaid in full. They happened to have been the last two years. And that amounted to about $79,000.
Were they paid on some variance or were they paid due to...
Because they still have the property.
Well, the only thing I see is that a transfer of property, which is unfortunately what it would be, that your name, your name would not be the only thing on. This is, this is not, we're not saying that we're trying to penalize you for getting married at all. That's, that is not here. But we're going by the letter of the law in the contract. So a transfer of ownership to Les, which is your right to do, and, you know, as a married couple, but the moment he transfers, that's a, that's a legal transfer. And then that gives you the right to decide how you want to affect your citizens in your town with this.
So how many years left, are left on the loan?
Two.
Two. Maybe I'm missing it, wouldn't be, it's been that kind of day. But could we not just hold course and give him two years to pay it off as if...
Well, that's, that's what...
It's what you're going to do.
It sounds like it's exactly what I'm hearing.
We're not asking him to pay it off.
No, we're, they're at, at the end of the time here.
We're just saying, we're just saying the state might ask for it.
Let me rephrase my question because I didn't phrase it right. And I'm trying to learn here because this is a little fuzzy for me. So if nothing in the marital status changed, in two years...
I don't know if they've been forgiven, the marriage has, nothing, you know, to your contract.
Okay, okay, so if the name has, okay, certainly, if the name had been added to the title.
And it hasn't done.
Okay, so let's say if then we, because the main, the main title owner is still there, could we not just hold course with what would have happened if the name hadn't been added to the title? I guess that's my question, does that make more sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with giving it now if the state doesn't ask for it back. That's not the problem. The problem is if the state is going to ask for it to be paid in full.
And who are they going to ask for the payment? And I, I hate to put that on you. They're coming back to, they're coming back to ask you. When I called that whole program, there was a contact person and he said it's up to him. You're the ones running the program, it's up to you. So you could call him, he said he'd be willing to talk to somebody, but there isn't an actual Southern Minnesota, whatever it is, soccer event, but the name's been... Maybe that's the better course. I'd hate to see them come back and then we have to come back to you and say, because you changed the name on the title, that that loan is in repayment. That's, that would be a horrible thing to do. But we're already doing this, we're, I've got three loans out now because we built a garage. I got married, I want Les to have the house if I die. We're just taking care of ourselves. I just want this to, I mean, this is common sense to me. I don't, I don't see, if we have to pay appropriate amount, whatever, but...
It basically says negotiation approved by the committee, which was Petty Peace and Gail Fensky. Now they're gone, so that falls on you.
But I, I mean, I don't know if the improvements in estimated value, the improvements would even be feasible at this point because those appliances and things like that are, what's a six-year-old refrigerator worth? Nothing. So, I mean, I don't know how many people are allowed to probably contact that person and find out, find out if they're even going to pursue repayment.
I think the, the big number challenge is that we have required three other individuals to pay in. We did not have them appropriated for goodness.
And so they're all still...
They're not living there, it's not the bringer of the, the...
Yeah, but it's, it's the same legal mechanism. And it, what, what's, what I'm struggling with is, I don't understand, I mean, I don't understand why you couldn't get a simple will that would convey the property to him. What time it passes?
We have to get our loans. Keep them ruining their property.
And I got the same thing here's, I mean, a while back I did ask him, you said it would be appropriated. You went ahead and asked the DA loan and then you came back and said, no, yeah, we will think that or come to the meeting. So we're already in with money that we owe on this.
I mean, you can put him on the title.
I was told I couldn't do that either.
No, you can, you can put, you can do, you put him on the title, you can reinfinancer the loans, but when you do that, you're going to have to roll this loan into it because you're going to be required to repay it pursuant to the agreement. And so you can change that with the committee, they can negotiate the payment.
How about this? I would ask, how long would you keep the loan, two more years if we sell the place, will it be a loan on? I don't understand.
Well, we just, how, how about, how about we just make, city makes a phone call, verifies the information where we can meet in our next appropriate meeting and we can have further discussions. Celia and Al will touch base after she's had a chance to conversate with that individual. If we can accomplish it, certainly, we'll advise the council.
Right, can imagine, this is the first time in a situation, this is a...
No, I'm sure it's not. I just don't...
But here's the problem, here's the, here's the, the other point that Celia's trying to make that I'll make more clearly, is that you're setting a court precedent.
Yes.
Because you made other people get repaid and go over and pull on a transfer conveyance. And I understand that we're not selling it to somebody else, this is a... But if you really forgive, they recap their home and then they turn it around and six to, to 12 months and sell it, then you're going to have to, and you're, you're sitting here wanting to redo this whole program and give people money and then you go and fly in the face of other people who did it. And you treat someone else completely differently, like they're propping front. That flies in my face on the court.
Okay.
It sets up very dangerous...
Hang on, let's get this...
Can you please not interrupt me because even when you're yelling, I didn't interrupt you.
Right here, so...
But as long as she keeps the property, maintains the property as the principal place of residence.
You, you're, you're not reading the document in its entirety, you and I could agree to disagree. We're going to look into it further. So that they're not saying no to you right now, we're going to do a little bit more research, talk to the folks that Tara is suggesting, and then we'll go, we'll come back in two weeks.
I think we need to clarify two points before we go ask the questions. The first is, I understand the dangerous precedent. But, and maybe I want to miss, this is a different situation. The principal person is not selling the property. To me, as an apple authority, I'm not saying...
But they sold the property within the next two years, correct? When then you've got...
Tracking that totally, tracking that totally, which leads me to my second question, which is, so if we just play this out, the way it's going to play out over the next two years, providing we verify that the state's not going to come back to us for funding, what's hurt there? And I, and it just seems real...
I'm not saying that there's anything would be hurt there. If you're suggesting that she can just transfer, put him on the title, transferring part of her interest in property to him. And then the woman remains the same, then we don't necessarily run that risk. However, I don't want a state organization doing an audit and asking us to pay $22,500, so we're going to do our due diligence and come back in two weeks. There we go. Sound good?
Yep.
Sound good to that?
I, I just think... I would suggest with this program going forward, that you can really rewrite it. Make it clear that if you're going to marry...
The program doesn't exist.
Okay, I think that, because it, I'm just a little guy here being in my house, it's still around. I can tell you this is not what he meant when he said, any of this. And that's, I'm sure that something will probably come up, which, by them giving causes of right people, we may find out that, oh, yes, this kind of thing has come up. I wish Quill did this before, because I've been asking this all over here now, so thank you for...
Excuse me?
I...
We, we're looking, we're going to look into it now. But the way we...
I'm the resident of the city and I've been here over 20 years, so I appreciate it, thank you. I've asked to have it done before. So thank you for giving a jump.
To Parades Update and Settle Events, Request for Rural Closures.
Katie's here. I've spoken with Katie since I haven't been in all the meetings and I don't know what's all going on. I spoke with Katie, would enlighten us on the foot that actually going on. She was like, I'm still putting pieces together, so I'm very, I'm prepared. Right now, I'm, from what I know of, I'm hoping to get rural closed from Center to Vendo, Main Street section on Saturday from 8:00 AM to approximately 6:00 PM to allow the kid zone, the car show, and the arts and craft vendors.
All right, let's go back. So you would like, and this is on the agenda tonight, so we're looking at Center?
Center South.
Center?
Center South or Center North? Center South, I think. I talked to Lynn.
Lynn would like to be included.
Yes. Which earlier, there's a... Yes, we have a walk, not a...
Yes, Lynn would like to be included at the park.
So we got to bring it back to right before True Value?
Yeah.
That's the other name, something matters.
It don't matter. So True Value all the way down to obviously Veterans Park?
Yep.
And that is starting Saturday, this time?
Just Saturday from like 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Saturday from...
I would recommend we close from the alley then down to Center as well. Otherwise, you're going to have people cutting through some junk food.
Well, it's going to be closed off anyways for the event between...
Well, that's not till later on, but you could just as well close it. Yeah, that would be my... Then alley, otherwise you're going to have traffic issues. To your main first.
Oh, oh, oh.
Do we need to do on the south side though, also, do you think?
No, I believe, I believe Center South open so people can get around the side streets, but it is like...
Well, there's a great word in the alley, not so much Center South.
Well, it would be alley. The alley, like, we need people for this, for the banks. Maybe everything else can come outside.
And I know like the car show, based on they're expecting about 80 cars. They had 79 last year. So a lot of it depends on the weather and stuff like that, because a lot of people are skeptical about grading down their vehicles. So there could be quite a few cars. And they mentioned about possibly having to go down Addage slightly between Pioneer and CCC if they need it a little bit more.
But then let's go to Friday. Friday, we need Main Street closed for parade.
Parade would be Friday. Right now, I have four food vendors and that's a whole lot. Compared to what we have down at the park, I believe intended on having them, having the serving windows on there, like facing the sidewalks, so we don't have to close Main Street. Just trying to limit the closure rate to be...
Oh, but, oh, we have the parade going too, so we have to close.
So it'd be closed from beginning to end of the parade.
So parade closure on Friday and then it gets reopened and you're saying vendors for the food, the windows go to the sidewalk. And then Saturday, you need Main Street closed... And then Saturday, you need Main Street closed, um, how about First Street by the Legion?
So, the Beanbag Tournament has approved to be in Petrow's grass area next to their shop. So there will be activity there on Saturday. I think Beanbag Tournament starts at ten for the kids. So approximately, I think, registration is at nine thirty. Um, so that would be pretty busy back there.
They're also requesting the alley, the alley, the library alley also from Whitney's. Um, Whitney's until the library to be closed. And, uh, only homeowner, I think, uh, Darren, Darren was going to contact, and I think he's involved in the Beanbag Tour.
Yeah, yeah, with our school.
And that, he's requesting that from nine thirty AM to six, so is that kind of, are we leaving First Street closed? I got to contact Tony Donalds and stuff. Sometimes their trucks come through there. Okay? Not as much anymore? No?
No, they're not doing any, we just have a bunch of them.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Without my homes on it?
And that's on Saturday from.
Nine thirty, or nine thirty AM to six PM is the alley request, but I'm, I'm asking what do you guys think in regards to First Street then? What do you?
Well, what kind of events are?
The band doesn't start till eight on Saturday night.
And Friday night is?
Friday night is eight thirty.
So you have to shut from s- steps to, uh, two, six to one.
Want to shut down First Street for the bands?
I think it would be a good safety thing, just with a lot of foot traffic.
They don't need space. And the parking, the part of the parking lot we're using is almost twice the size of what we had last year.
But you were gonna, are you gonna have the food vendors move up there at night or not?
It sounds like they're going to stay on Main Street, just because a lot of them have fryers.
Okay.
That are just really hard. They can't move them without driving them.
Oh, okay.
And right now, I have a couple of food vendors that are up in the air, but even staying Friday night just because of not being able to plug in their coolers. That's what I'm struggling with.
So you need First Street?
Closed on Friday or not?
I don't, what do you think about Friday night?
Nope, we better hit that.
I mean, Friday or Saturday for that.
The only thing would be if it, like, food, or, um, foot traffic, it'd be a big deal, like, in the road closure. Um, like, that busy in the evening hours.
Well, if they come up to Main Street.
I don't think, in the past, we have, it wasn't closed, was it?
Did I actually up there?
No, but every, this, this is a little different.
Yeah, we should have a last time too.
Yeah, I think it's going to be easier up there Friday, Saturday evening than it has been in the past, just because it's going to be less busy. There's nobody staying in the art, so.
Yeah, but the parking was usually closed by this point, wasn't it, in the band street?
We were normally down about nine thirty Saturday night. But then all the people that just stayed in the campground and then go and come. I mean, that would be cool.
So Saturday, apparently. Six to two.
Or First Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you.
We're dealing, we're closing the alleys already.
Yeah.
Are they up, you shut down?
Not the whole alley.
Not the whole alley? Uh, we shut the whole town down.
Oh, okay.
So.
Somebody else is answering for that.
Yeah, we're only setting it down to a certain area. They were kind of upset about that.
Very upset.
Well, I mean, I, that's just part of the nation. We're concerned about foot traffic. And all, you know, a lot of vehicles driving in there. Looks like it's starting to want to shut in, telling, ultimately.
Oh, boy. K- Rees had a problem with it, Plaza had a problem with it, because of deliveries, Coligan had a problem with it. Um, and I don't know why, but the, the crystal insurance also had a problem with it. So when we did the measurements for where the fence is going to go, we basically just shut it from preferred to the other side of the verse.
Yeah. Could you park a car there? And then a barrier on the other side, just so you don't get sweaty that. If he wants to drive right to the door of the hall there. You're only going to block half the park route.
You block the park.
I don't, no, you're only blocking part of the alley out, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So could you put the barrier and then like a vehicle parked there?
So if they can't move.
I'm just saying that somebody has to come through that alley.
They're not even doing a barrier, because it's not a barrier, it's a fence. It's a fence just like the one that they had around Inspire when they built it. With send-backs.
Okay.
In fact, it's the exact same fence.
So First Street, you just pull that from six to two.
On Saturday?
Yeah. Right?
Saturday evening? Let's do recap then, just so I got the bearings here. Main Street, uh, Friday night, obviously the parade will go through. And then, uh, Main Street will be closed on Saturday morning at eight AM, um, to six PM. Okay, it will reopen and will remain open then for the remainder of the weekend, correct? Okay? Then we go to First Street. Now, First Street is only going to be closed on Saturday from six PM until two AM. Okay? Then the alley in, by the library, uh, will be nine thirty until six PM for the Beanbag thing. And then the alley behind the Legion is basically a, what time to what?
I think I would say four, Friday. Until whenever First Street opens.
So two AM on Saturday?
And then basically the same time Saturday night.
So that'd be Friday. You're not going to close down First Street entirely, right?
We're not doing anything on, oh, just First Street from six PM until two AM on Saturday.
On Saturday?
I guess on Saturday, that's the First Street.
Probably from the primary area, from the primary over there. Because there's people that live in it.
Mm-hmm.
So you either can't close it down completely or you're going to have to.
So we just do it up.
You're not closing it Friday, though. Keep it open to local traffic.
I don't know that we need to.
Well, close it Friday, they're a big thing on.
Friday will be busy too. That would be Friday, they'd actually be a little more full on Saturday. Because they're, but they're, but the travel's down.
I don't know.
Like, close it from the end, until the library down.
Yeah, so kind of where our parking lot starts.
Where pretty much the parking lot.
Parking lot starts to actually the end of Legion, this property, right before the, yeah.
Pretty much, yeah, the library is, is the key to the property.
Yep.
And that's Friday and Saturday.
That's just Saturday.
What time's the parade?
Seven. Seven o'clock. Normally it's about an hour and a half long. Sometimes a little bit shorter, depending on who's pushing the people through, how quick they're going.
Okay, so we're closed closures. Even walking.
Just, so we just need to add in the alley north of First Street down to the second gen item, right? No, just.
We're just going to do a road closure and we're just going to add on more.
That's fine.
And so then, um, we are working on equitables as well to be on Main Street, but that'll be there in your own closure. And just waiting to hear back to our insurance, that Matt Mullins, who's a great sponsor, but also, um, probably does want to cover it in insurance. Uh, you go ahead and talk to Matt Anderson, and we're going to be the same in the empty building for the kids though. Um, with the base painting, uh, we'll have people that are coming in with that. So we are doing attempts this year, um, just keeping Main Street open as much as possible, not their hours. We decided to go back, since the majority of our people are going to be spread out. I don't know the music. Be more, be particularly more spacious than what we have. So right now, um, with G and K rental, I have twenty picnic tables, our old and classic ones, to use in the Legion parking lot area, and then for Main Street as well. Um, on tables and chairs for the kids though.
So you won't be taking any of our picnic tables then, from the park?
No. This woman is having them alone, and they're not sanitized and everything.
And they're all sanitized, they're all ready for you. It's just we don't have, uh, you just have to find somebody to pick them up and take them back.
Yeah, but G and K already had eight thousand dollars of business through us, so, like, we needed to give them something at least.
Sure.
That was literally good for us, like. And then I have thirty, forty gallon cardboard garbage containers sitting in storage even too.
At least I get ahold of you today and your, sit downstairs and everything that you need to.
Yeah, yeah, so I talked with her to, right now we're going to set up behind the Legion, and so Dana gets some of the container tools. And then they move them all a bit more acceptable.
Okay.
But we figured that would be the best other base location for them would be in the alley space there at Legion.
Yeah. What else you got?
And I'm working with Inspire, and they're going to post the vendors' homes, that's quite good, and the car show's good. That's.
Go back.
All right, questions? Their worst have been canceled.
Their worst have been canceled, and they are not charging us anything for the cancellation. Um, they're really good to talk with, and they're going to put all the money that we, that we paid them for this year, they're going to put that for next year. I think you're in a better. And I'm hiring a, um, receptionist for the week. If anybody wants to call, I'll answer the phone for me. I'll hire somebody to do that for me this week. Two office phones and my cell phone.
Any questions, you guys, thoughts? Thank you, Katie, for putting up with a whole bunch of crap.
I.
Literally.
I'm literally, yeah. It's been a lot, um, I feel like I'm super unprepared just because there's, there's still loose ends to stuff. Um, just a lot of, well, people that go out of this or don't, aren't going to be able to pull it together. So the majority, we just have a pretty well set, there might just be some little adds on here and there, but nothing at all effective, so.
There are going to be boats in a row, because you've never done this before. The only thing I would suggest for your consideration is ninety-five percent of the people are going to be thrilled that it happened.
Yep.
There will be a five percent walk-in off.
Yep, yeah, so I've had a few, like, urgent crash vendors, always having to do the same dynamic, and nobody's going to come in, and I'm like, maybe, we're going to have a lot of traffic, like, like, you're a brand new event center that people are going to want to come in and see. Like, you're not going to be crowded in there. We're not showing you guys a bunch of storage rooms, like, you're going to have a nice, beautiful space to be in. We're excited for it, so. I don't know that Sophia knows this, as well, her internship was going to be, but she's, she's learning a lot of patience.
Who makes you relate?
Maybe that's why. Mark, what did you say to her tonight that she decided she had to come?
I don't know, I told her what time she had to be here, so.
She said she's working on, uh, submitting a school paper, so she could, I could have her for the rest of the week, and I was like, mhm, what does Mark say? I don't know, it's been going pretty good. I mean, the community of business people have just been amazing, so. Some of the Main Street business owners that I rarely, rarely hear anything from, that's really, sent a lot of great compliments, so.
Good, it's like that. Well, I just didn't know what to tell you guys on birthdays. I was.
Well, this has changed since Wednesday.
I know. You didn't head back till Friday probably too, so.
All right, that's, it's what it is, and that's going to happen. That's why it's really community here in Long Island.
All right, so on the agenda then, tonight we'll have all the road closures, and we'll just go with the flow, right?
Probably.
If you don't like the tone there.
He makes your recommendation, we don't take it, and then we're going to let him answer for it. Tremendous.
I'll take it for you. Go with my name.
And I should mention, and this has been brought up previously, um, food vendors that I have, that I'm working with this year, I asked them for a minimum hundred-dollar donation. We're not doing food and beverage tickets this year because with our Main Street businesses that sell, and the food vendors, we just decided that this year, just hold off on that, even though I have a couple thousand dollars worth of tickets printed sitting in my office. But, um, we just decided it was fair. Unfortunately, I know a lot of the vendors, I've talked to one of them, very large vendor, and he said he might have to call up what's this year because we've lost so much business because of things being canceled. So if there's any questions, consider, there's people asking about food and beverage tickets, but we're not doing that this year. And just ask our food vendors to make a donation for birthdays, and, uh, a couple of the Main Street businesses themselves, who I don't know if they would be willing to help be a sponsor if they are, if they are not a sponsor, or if they're.
Just to clear that statement, or whatever, he's not referring, I mean, we're not canceling, I mean.
No, it was, it's just in general.
In general. Because statewide. We're, everybody's dealing with stuff, and.
Yeah, he's like, he's like, I have one, if not two, town fairs that he may not be able to attend, and a couple other town festivals, and he said, everybody's just really struggling. So he was really reached out that we're still holding our event that he was able to come to last, as well as coming here. This will be his third year of birthdays, and, but, yeah, I can just say, everybody's really struggling, so we appreciate it, us not charging.
Which one is it?
Uh, Johnny Smoking Barbecue, I was there. And then July then, a full food truck for, I think, four years, so.
A whole lot of things in Southern Minnesota that hurt this.
That's not, we're doing the best we can.
Well, I guess you got to put a front foot on that. I mean, the bottom line is, the un, the hidden statement, what she just said, was there are a lot of communities that didn't take the chance to make it out. It says something. About the changer, the city administration.
I don't know, Katie's got to know the sex skin right now. I think she grew a couple more layers on. There's a lot of communities that are going to, Katie's, they'll just take all of.
Oh, yeah, they don't walk away with it, do they?
Thank you, Katie.
But that was these guys.
Yeah.
I just called, which?
It was, I mean, my birthday committee that Thursday night wanted to tell us, just not do it, let's not look forward. And a couple of people on my board got wind of that Thursday night, and we had a emergency board meeting seven thirty the next morning, and we wanted to modify it. I mean, unfortunately, we are losing a little bit of it, the blue spots is going to be a lot, we've had a lot of calls and questions about that, but there's several reasons, but we're moving forward with what we can, and we're going to make the most of it, and we want people to come here and realize that we're still here celebrating no matter, despite the stuff we've dealt with. From Idyllic Strong, so.
Thank you.
Going to do it without everybody else. I appreciate it.
You want more questions?
Love it, Chris.
Oh, boy.
What are we doing?
That sounds like a golf.
Should I, should I get my own page?
Well, uh, okay, well, I did print out, like, the schedule of events since, uh, June, or since June nineteenth. And it's, like, four pages long in regards to what my staff and I went through. Um, but, to let you guys know, obviously, the waters have gone down. But, with that being said, the damage of the infrastructure is what we're dealing with right now. So, we've had the flood adjusters in, and we've also had the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust in, um, to go through all of the locations that have been compromised or damaged. Uh, right now, on the schedule, we have over twenty locations, uh, that the city owns that have been damaged and compromised. And when I say that, uh, they might look just perfectly fine from the outside, but, uh, list stations. We have, uh, Joy Avenue list station, we have the park list station, and we have the main list station. Obviously, we can see the damage, but all of those list stations were compromised and need to all be replaced. Um, so what that means is that we have no, uh, ability to flush the toilet in the park system right now. And that is one of the biggest reasons why the park is down or is not working, until we get that, the station up and going. And that's going to take over a week and a half to get new, new components in and all of that. So, um, FEMA will be coming tomorrow. Um, I'm not really sure, just visit or how it's all going to go, I never really had FEMA here, uh, like this, so this is new. And I'm, got to figure out what it all means, but usually I go through everything and get all the documentation ready and. and then I have a meeting over at the county with the FEMA representative, so, uh, I say FEMA's coming in, but I'm not really sure what they're gonna do. But I will take them on a tour and show them some of the major damage and, uh, one location that comes to mind, uh, not only the lift stations, but, um, the tan shelter, uh, more, uh, significant cracks within the building itself. The other thing is that it had gotten into the soffit of the roof, um, and that obviously is not covered under insurance. So the tan shelter is something I need to address with FEMA. So once I can start piecing this all together, um, the park board meeting will be called, um, a golf board meeting will be called, um, to get into the golf course. It's, uh, pretty much, everything needs to be gutted out as we speak. There, floor is ceiling, everything, there's also a crack in the foundation, crack in the roof. So I'm dealing with insurance adjusters right now and see where we're gonna go with everything and, um, what value will come back and, and when that comes back to again, uh, golf and park meetings that we need to discuss, both major damage. So, um, I mean, again, the campground and the park will be closed this week. For birthdays, it breaks my heart, but the electrical, the water and the wastewater infrastructure needs to be fixed before anybody can go down there. So maybe it might look from the moment that the waters have receded, but it's all the internal stuff. Um, we ask the public to be patient and understanding, please stay out of the park. Um, as we had our staff meeting this morning, somebody drove through there with a side by side with, um, studded tires and ripped up a bunch of stuff in there. We can't express enough that you have to stay out of there, that it's too wet and it wrecks things more for us. And so what looks fine, just let it dry and then we'll wash it off, but we don't need people driving through there and looking at everything. So just please stay out of the park, it's the city and the light plant staff dress to clean up. So I know the light plant was down there today, trucking the transformer. I think we're all fine there, but now all the pedestals and everything have to be evaluated. Questions, I know everybody's got questions. Lots of questions, lots of thoughts, opinions, we'll go for it.
So, was this flood predicted in the flood study we did?
Down to a weather.
Yeah, I don't, what, what's our flood study gonna look like for the next five years, ten years? Because wasn't our flood study based on what we, is that what you asked me, is about the flood study? Cause now it's really irrelevant in regards to the dam being compromised and now we're, we have to go back to the drawing board?
Probably. But that's the, I mean, that's the, the kicker level thing is those conditions have changed so much since that flood. And the fact that, I don't think, I mean, they were saying in some locations, this is more like two hundred and fifty year flood. You know, and none of, none of those, uh, parameters were put into the modeling at all. Also, none of the parameters now with the, if the dam is removed or if the dam is circumvented or whatever that it has to do with it. None of those parameters and flows and everything are gonna be able to be modeled either, so. Uh, it really might change, you know, be a beneficial change for our community, but it might be an incremental change for everybody, you know, from the dam out. You know, I, so I really have no idea what, what it's gonna look like. It's nice to spend that money and get those models, but they were good for six months. The information's still there, I guess, but they're no longer relevant to any situation we're gonna probably be dealing with. And as far as the infrastructure goes, is this gonna be something where we're still gonna maybe have time to piggyback on, um, to back out of the, to the Center Street project and, and look at a remodel of the lift station? Potentially, or it's not, or nothing else, maybe firming it with some of those soils from the Center Street project?
So there is also grant opportunities, which, uh, Celia will be attending, some women are getting stuff. Yeah, they're gonna probably push us to do some modifications because, and this is coming on PCA.
Right.
Yeah, so that is why we're already starting.
That would be the other thing to kind of look at is, I know we had to bypass pump and do a lot of that stuff because of the fact that it came up so fast. But if we can build in some more, whether it's additional.
I don't, I don't know what the, the.
No, but what I'm saying is that now we have the time to explore it before that progress done, if it's additional manholes or easier to, you know, set up pumps on or whatever, now would be the time to kind of look at all that and maybe look at some redesign to make it more affordable than it's already designed with.
I know, and so that's also in consideration also, so. Cause, uh, and maybe we never go through it again, but we need to design it or rebuild it back to.
Yeah, I would, I would love for somebody to tell me if the dam breaking is gonna make it so we never flood it. I don't, that's not happening, but.
So not only with all of the other infrastructure, yeah, there'll be some major decisions that the council will need to discuss. Um, as soon as I get all the data and everything put together, I will start calling those, uh, meetings to start evaluating.
With all that said, is there gonna be new data, is there gonna be new information and new modeling as a goal, so if we're gonna see if, if this has been more kind of a crash?
I don't know, that would be, if you're talking about another flood store, study or something.
Well, I'm just talking about rerunning the model with current.
And that would be.
Current parameters, just to see how the, and what it would look like.
I think they wouldn't be able to tell you that until they figure out what they're doing in Florida.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is the funding for it, you know, we, I went to the, the state for the funding, so would I have to go back up to the state again asking for funding or do I have to take in consideration what currently have and go to the DNR and and discuss it with them, but that goes back to, I mean, we have to give it a little time for them to actually acquire some sort of thoughts on what's gonna happen.
Well, the other thing was, the whole reason for the flood study was so that the next time it flooded, we'd have that information.
To mitigate.
To mitigate for FEMA, well.
I'm not really sure, I can, I can put it out there that the flood study, I'm not really sure.
I don't know who you, uh, who, which flight will you run that up or whatever, but definitely talk to people, yeah, we got this flood study, uh, we pulled some of this off now that.
I think I might, I, I, you know, now I'm just thinking about it, I probably will use it just for the sake of it's really extreme.
Right.
And it may not seem really extreme, but I think that I, when FEMA does come to the table and we have made our decisions of how we're going forward with some of the things, I think we should definitely use the flood study for the mitigation.
Something we could work with over the county on, since I'm guessing they're gonna be doing all kinds of flood studies of what they are gonna do with that dam. That we could take back off of that.
It might be that we don't even need to go out and do anything, maybe they're gonna come back that far to capture the data. Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I would imagine that they're probably, well, the bridge and everything has been compromised, so.
From what I heard, it's, the bridge is done, they're gonna be carrying it on probably.
So. The force of the water is amazing, I mean, I can't, I mean, obviously we all saw how much it took away from the banks over there and took the house and whatever else. It's, it's amazing. So, I don't know, did I give you enough information? I know I'm kind of in the, in the, in the middle of it or haven't really got some definite answers on anything. I mean, last week was the first time I got into the car, so I mean, we had to drive across nine on utility carts just to take the adjusters down there just to go into the.
Say it's way too early to make any type of determination right now.
Yeah, but I just want the public to know that just because it looks like it is ready to open, it's really not, so.
We got the gates still closed off. Yeah, on the one side, the other side, I saw, I saw somebody moving barriers.
And they're having issues with people driving over the damn bridge too, moving barriers, so it's not just anybody that's everywhere that they're having a problem. Even if that bridge was down over there on top of there. I don't really want it, but honestly.
Yeah.
Is there something maybe we could put back, I think the compensation on?
Yep.
On Delar?
Well, we have the officers here that are supposed to picket anybody that passes the barriers.
But that's what I'm saying, but put like cones and like that orange fence across the whole entire road there, I understand city boys have to get in there.
They gotta get in there, and that's, that's the problem.
I was just gonna say, was that person that was in the parking, a gray truck? You can't park your, way out of the. No, I can, I can. But yeah, any other questions from the public, I mean, any concerns, thoughts? I mean, wonderful pictures in the paper, I mean, that looks amazing, like the drone footage and everything.
Those nights have a drone, that makes you get pictures and we don't have to be just.
Well, no, but it puts it in perspective, I mean, you can honestly see the progress of everything and, and so that was great.
It was amazing and, and exciting, especially with the videos, like you talk about, uh, the force of the water from the officers taking videos, I mean, you can really see it happening and that in the park now, like you can see, I mean, the things that it moved that shouldn't be moving. I was down in Girdon City at the fairgrounds on Saturday and seeing how much has gone from the roads and the trees and the damages and, and helps with, like, it was like when I, that it took so much, I didn't.
Seeing the shipping container crossing down the river there was like the same. How he thinks or not, I don't know, like the golf course.
Is there anything we can do with like, say the photos that Jeff took and try and highlight them so that we can inform or educate the public that goes, just because the water's receded, all of that ground is so saturated that we, that parameter needs to be stayed out, we just, you have to.
Some people won't listen yet.
I mean, it seems like, it seems like a farmer looking at a flooded out spot in a field, he knows better to take that tractor out there because it's too wet.
Right, I mean, how many people did we have drive through barricades?
I gotta get these Venus plants.
We had, we had people, while we're standing down there, drive through the barricades, through the knee deep water while we're standing there, it was semi, a couple cars, I mean.
Yeah.
As far as the, for the temperature pressure, have we all been strapped to those cars?
Tim, have you noticed that bridges have been inspected? They have, right?
Other than that, oh, I, I think of, they're also a little apprehensive that that old bridge is actually going, a new bridge.
The old bridge.
And I always say it's a hard thing.
But does anybody, I don't know, do you guys know who is involved in all of that? I didn't know.
Yeah, wasn't there a big push up and just go about redoing that location?
I thought it was supposed to be used for the north, for the south side of the golf course, you know, you're gonna be on the other side.
Oh, all with the other nine holes?
Yeah.
My understanding. That went a long way. That's what I remember.
You're always finding that everything, my team, the county's been sitting so well, he doesn't have to worry, even if they have to do this. You need five thousand dollars per curse in one spot. It was like two or three rolls of gravel here and there and some tar and said, I don't know if we're gonna have much.
Basically, is there a location that the county, um, the FEMA? Yep.
Well, one lift station, that's over thirty, it's almost thirty thousand dollars, that just changed out the park lift station or the Joy Avenue lift station. So I think twenty-five thousand was the thing, so we met it with just one lift station and we have a massive lift station, so you guys.
Can I make a previous question, there, I was gonna open that though, you can see all that bridge.
Okay.
Really on topic, but.
So the bridges are not my authority, that's probably. So, um, but back to the old bridge though, if anybody has any information in regards to who was involved in that, I would, we would like to talk to them.
When you say well done.
Um, I don't know, was there funding or something?
Something about raise enough, I thought, and what you're doing, like, the bottom of it, there's a big push like five, six years to me.
That's what I was, I was coming down to our museum and they contacted a series of meetings to get, there was a portion of the grant money, I think to do the study. And then I don't know that it ever went any further, but then what they were gonna try to redo it, like they tell me to get.
The trail.
The trail was supposed to go over it and, and that hasn't happened, so it kind of got.
But some of the local areas, some of the places in the.
I believe in that, I'm a marketer, I don't know. I believe in it, so. Maybe the, the board of the historical center might know more.
Yeah, it's been a year that we're here. Remembered and, but all stuck down there, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna say like the Navy Academy, I roll my BBS ones.
Okay.
And, um.
Not gonna point into the right person.
To say like, I'm trying to remember who else.
And. You know, the inspector, Kim.
Oh, John.
John.
John, Pam's the director.
They both know a lot, so.
Thank you, and something I can remember is I just listened to the bottom line. And that was a big hurdle, because even though I'd seen only bridges like it that existed in the world, which was one of the reasons that it was in flames. Bigger projects, I think.
Well, I don't think that can be. Don't know if there's, if it's rotting or if there's debris pushing up against it, damaging it more, yeah. We just need to discuss the future.
Which bridge is it that's in a comfortable state? That counties?
I think that's county too, if I remember, a seal was called on it a couple times.
I don't know, it's been down there for.
Years, years and years, so.
Anything else to workshop?
I don't want to say anything else, any other questions? We're trying our best.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
A little favor say add.
Sorry.
On the most concerned side, won't you?